Hello folks. Welcome to the October 1st, 2016 special open session at which we'll be considering, we're having a dialogue and considering the findings of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Governance. My name is Len Welsh, I'm the Board President. Can you all hear me? This time I'll take roll call, having come out of closed session. Director Sheris Watt.
Here.
Director Toomes.
Here.
Director Gillette. And Vanessa Cordova, you're on the phone, correct? We are going to have a little bit of an issue if you want to comment Vanessa. I think probably if people can't hear you, you'll have to repeat what you said so they can if you have something to say. We came--
Vanessa's in Italy, I think?
Yeah, you're in Italy still, right Vanessa? The answer's yes. Alright, so we just came out of closed session. No action was taken on any of the items. However, you may have seen that we were interviewing Kevin Kyle for the possible position of GM, interim GM chief. He was one of the finalists last time around we were doing interviews. I can't say that we're taking any action, but the interview did go well. I said, "We didn't take any action, but the interview did go well." So, at this time, we will begin the open session. We're not taking public comments as we go on a regular session on items, not on the agenda. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing, I guess we're doing brief summaries of the work that you folks did, Dr. Spaff, and then question and answer so we can inform ourselves as well as we can about their research and findings. We have the Ad-Hoc Committee up there. Can I ask each of you to introduce yourselves, please? And, go ahead.
There are four members who couldn't make it today. Garen Corbett, Chris Deppi, Mayberry Benson, and Charles Reichman.
Okay, so format wise, my understanding was you're going to be up at the podium, sort of helping us direct the conversation. Chief is going to be back there assisting with, you know, technical stuff. He'll be available to come up if there are any questions for him. So, at this time, I think maybe it'd be good for you to step up. Question? Sure. Well, actually, yeah, go ahead.
Got it.
I don't think it's against the law. Go ahead.
You don't think it won't be taken away? First, I just want to say a huge thank you for this before we even get started. This is a wonderful piece of work and I really, really appreciate your time and your effort. And finally, yes, please. And I'm sure you're thrilled to have it done. And also, I hope that all of you will be able in the next 30, 31 days to show your thanks and appreciation to Kevin Hart for the time and energy that he has put forth into this district and the work he has struggled to make it better. So, thank you very much. So. That's all.
We'll be giving more thank yous at the next regular meeting, but I do want to, I second everything that Rochelle said, and I also want to comment that the quality of this report is, you know, nothing less than fabulous. You guys did a really good job, not just in the depth of, you know, information seeking you engaged in, but getting it down on paper in a way that's clear, articulate, and concise. So, that being said, anybody else want to say anything up here? No? Yes?
I'm going to echo the comments. I think this is one of the best reports I've seen on a very difficult set of issues and subjects. So, many thanks to the tireless work of this committee and to its Chair, Dave Spaff, who I think had to really maneuver through some difficult issues on all sides and did it with grace and with expertise. So, many thanks to you Dave and to each of the committee chairs who did the same.
So, with that, why don't we kick off? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're all giving accolades here. I wanted to thank Chief for his service for the last 16 to 18 months and also thank this group for all the work they did. You carried a yeoman's job. Thank you all.
Should we start now?
Okay. Well, thank you everyone for coming. Very much appreciate your willingness to come out on a Saturday morning, beautiful Saturday morning, to listen to us. For those of you who are not familiar with our work and the tasks that we took on, I just want to give a very brief background. We started in August of last year as 10 volunteers who were selected by the Board. And we started in earnest in October and we've gone for a whole year and I think have produced an excellent report, recognizing that we had 10 individuals who had different opinions and positions on the issues and yet they were able to come together, as you can see, in a consensus to produce a very good document. You will see in the, excuse me, the executive summary that we were tasked to look at three different issues. One being bifurcation of the combined General Manager/Chief of Police position, second, contracting out of police services, and the third consolidating with the fire district. And I think you also remember that we did a survey on police services to try to get some sense of what the community felt about police services, what they thought was good, what they thought was not so good. And we have put that up on our webpage and the appendix of the report also contains the results and an analysis of the results and I thank Simon for putting that together. And so, the report is long, it's over 200 pages, so it takes a little effort to read through. And as was mentioned, we were not tasked with looking at or providing recommendations. What we were asked to do was research those three areas, develop findings on the three areas, and provide pros and cons relative to those issues. So, I would urge you in your spare time to review the document. It is going to be particularly important with regard to one of those issues and that is the bifurcation of the General Manager/Chief of Police question because the Board obviously is going to have to look at that position very soon. So, I think it would be useful for the public to go over that part of the document and be prepared to engage with the Board in the near future. With that, I think I will start off with the first presentation, which will be a brief summary of the bifurcation Subcommittee's findings. Lisa Corona, who is the lead of that Subcommittee, will make the presentation. And let me just say, I was on that Subcommittee and Lisa should be applauded for all the work that she did. She was the principal writer of that part. She did a great job of editing. And secondly, she also served as the scribe of the committee, taking the notes every session and producing the minutes for the following meeting. So, frankly, she should be applauded for going the extra mile in both volunteering. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa. And I don't know whether you want to talk from here Lisa, or is it here? Okay. Fine.
Well, thank you for those kind words. Much appreciated. I'm going to just jump into about a, we only have 10 minutes to go over what is a pretty big body of work and it, I echo everybody's sentiment to read at least the executive summaries and some of the findings of all these groups. But I'm just going to go over very quickly some of the process and issues and the findings of our bifurcation Subcommittee. So, just to start, we, for the process, we looked at the basic job requirements of the General Manager and the Chief of Police. We interviewed 15 comparable agencies. We talked to seven professionals and associations. We met with community members. We developed global findings, including pros and cons. We did a spreadsheet-- Is this loud enough? Can you hear me? We did a spreadsheet of the agencies that we studied for the bifurcation issue with the relevant data that's in the report. And we also looked at base salary for General Manager and Chief of Police, only for those agencies that we studied, and I'll talk about that in a second. And we developed conceptual organizational diagrams, looking at various options depending on the configuration of the district, and I'll get to that in a second, too. So, in terms of how we organized the work, we really wanted to look at different systems. So, we first looked at those agencies that had a shared General Manager/Chief of Police for that. There are not too many, as everybody knows, that have both police and general managers' shared positions. We do here in Kensington. Broadmoor does, down on the, near, Broadmoor, near Colma and Daly City. And we also looked at a fire district. We looked at the Hercules Rodeo Fire District. Just happens that all fire districts have, the fire chief is actually the person who is the top administrative officer as well. It in essence is a combined position. That chief is responsible to the Board, responsible for the budget, responsible to the district, and has all the same duties as the administrative function of the General Manager here. The distinction being that a General Manager for Community Service District can actually oversee multiple services, whereas a fire district is focused on fire, which has multiple activities within the fire district itself. So, we looked at that. We also looked at an agency in particular that had a shared position for eight years and moved away from that, and that's the city of Sutter Creek. We had extensive interviews with both current and past managers for that city. We also looked at agencies that had split positions but had similar services. In other words, we looked at agencies, community service districts, and in some small cities that had either police or fire as part of their community service district. And they did have a separation of the manager and the chiefs in those circumstances. So, we wanted to get a sense of how those functioned, the pros and cons. And we also focused a little bit on agencies that had part-time General Managers. And this was developed over the course of the project because the idea of a part-time General Manager is something that seemed like an option that Kensington could consider. So, some of the global findings-- I'm going to, I don't want to, ooh, this is, I better speak faster. Some of the global findings are the-- First of all, the separation of a GM and a Chief of Police is a preferred organizational structure. With most, every agency we spoke with, with some minor exceptions of those that had a shared position, everyone else made a very strong case for the separation of those two positions. And they all indicated also that it came with a budget, you know, that the budget of being able to afford that position was, could be significant. Next, if there's a span, the span of services is critical. The more services that you have, the more you require a separate General Manager. So, for instance, if you just have police and maybe a trash contract or refuse contract, that's just one additional service. But if you have multiple services, parks and water service and libraries and other functions within your community service district, the more services you have, the more you need a separation of duties. Discipline grievances and investigations require clearly defined processes. This is true whether it's shared or not shared, but it is magnified if you have a shared position because you must maintain the separation of reviews for appeals, grievances, discipline. All the processes have steps that you must take. In many other institutes or agencies that are very small, because there are not a number of steps between all the appeal processes, they have systems where they have either binding arbitration, or they have separate investigations, or they also call on the city council or the Boards to be part of that appeal process. So, the separation of those pieces is critical for all agencies. Police Chiefs often, this is another finding, have dual roles for shorter periods of time. Typically, if the manager were to leave, the chief could have a dual role. This occurred, you know, anywhere from three months to two years from the research that we did in terms of people holding those positions. Next, the General Manager and the Chief of Police skills and training are not the same. Initially, of course, the police chief has to come up through command structure and, you know, be a police officer and respond, you know, be organized to respond to emergencies and have a much more structured training in terms of how that occurs. A General Manager would come typically more from public administration background, maybe have different skills in broader community activities, budget, finance, and sort of other areas that a chief, a police officer and a police chief may not necessarily have as their primary educational and training background. Next, the dual role of General Manager and Chief of Police is challenged in finding the right person with both skill sets. So, that's something that if you go in that direction, you really have to make sure both those skill sets or all the full range of skill sets are being met. Next, a part-time General Manager requires clear Board goals and empowered staff. If you look at a part-time General Manager, you're really in a situation of being able to, you know, nobody, some, that person is not here full-time. There are decisions on that that have to be looked at, and this is all in the report. Part-time chief is not recommended under any circumstances. This is primarily a police district. It's not recommended. That person must be on 24/7 call. They must oversee and provide leadership for the force. They, a part-time chief is not, is not recommended by anybody that we interviewed. So, those are some of the general findings that we had. When we looked at the criteria for a part-time General Manager, some of the things that came out of that process by people who were part-time General Managers in other agencies is that there be clear policy, defined goals, and measurable objectives from the Board. There has to be clarity. There have to be good managers and admin staff that are empowered to make decisions when that person is not available. Decisions have to be able, in some cases, to wait until the General Manager is available. And they, in our case, in Kensington, that person is a part-time General Manager or even a full-time General Manager. This would apply in both. They must have a strong knowledge of police services. What are good services? How can they help guide those services? So, having a knowledge about the police service function is critical. Let's see, how long is it? How much time do I have? About another few minutes? Okay. Five minutes? Okay. So, as we know, over many years here in our community, the, there are challenges to having a dual role position. That position is questioned on many, many fronts. In terms of budget development, they're questioned, using independent oversight. Are they delivering services equitably? They're challenged on that. It's challenging in terms of the discipline and grievance process and investigations. They're challenged on that. The public, it may be apprehensive in reporting police-related issues to a dual role position. Might be fear of retribution for reporting police issues. These are all things that came up from community discussions. How do you ensure adequate oversight of the police when there's not another entity that's hired to do that? And the police officers may resent the fact that the chief is not working full-time on police-related activities. There's sort of all these issues that are around that that make it incredibly difficult and I'm sure Chief Hart has experienced many of these along the way here. So, what we then did was we looked at six options. We looked at six options for organizing the structure of what would happen if the position were bifurcated. The first, the first structure we looked at was what is the existing structure that we have, which is the joint position. And we then looked at the part-time General Manager as a part-time position and retaining our full police force. Then we looked at a full-time General Manager and retaining our in-house police force. We looked at a part-time General Manager and contracting out the police services. And we looked at consolidation with the fire district where we retained our in-house department as full staff. And we looked at what would happen if we contracted out both police and consolidated with the contract for the fire department. So, just to summarize on this, without going into all these six diagrams which are in this report, there's a few things that I just want to point out. When you have a part-time General Manager, it really is a decision about how much community involvement there is or that the Board wishes to see. I mean, if you have a part-time General Manager, they don't have as much time to possibly go to all the meetings, staff all of the, the committee meetings that are established by the Board, participate in community activities. They may not have time to do as much coordination with other agencies. It's a part-time position. Now, how much part-time and how little is still to be determined by the Board. But there are those issues that surround the part-time versus full-time opposition. There's just not as much time for a part-time person. And really, the question is how much time is needed by the community. When you look at hiring a full-time General Manager-- Let me put, let me step to a different-- When you contract out services, you, you don't have as much staff. You don't have as much obligation and payroll and all these other functions that you have when you have full-time staff. So, when you, when you contract out services, you really have put together the scope of what those services are. You go out to bid, you sign contracts, and you basically manage those contracts versus having to put in the same kind of time, a much greater amount of time when you have all the staff in your house. So, using part-time or full-time General Manager affects that issue as well. Let's see. The other thing I just wanted to say in this is to go over some of the numbers. We looked at what it would cost to have a man, part-time manager, a full-time manager, and we just used the numbers from our exact, the agencies that we studied, which may not be reflective of the agencies around us in our neighborhood here in Kensington, but they are representative of the area, agencies studied without. These numbers do not include benefits. So, if you want a part-time manager and if that works for your agency, you know, you're looking at somewhere between, in our study, $63,000 to $97,000 for a part-time person. That does not include benefits. If you go to a full-time General Manager, you're looking at somewhere between $95,000 and $200,000. These are from the small comparable agencies that we studied in our area. And just to give you an idea of the Chief of Police salary range that we, that were in our area, it was between $61,000 and $147,000 for comparable agencies, not necessarily around us, which would probably be more expensive. But that's for comparable agencies. That does not include any benefits. No benefits. So, you can add minimum for chiefs, I don't know, maybe if they are benefited, up to probably 30% over and above that, as well as for General Managers. So, one of the things this report looked at was trying to see if there were opportunities to hire people who were retired possibly from other agencies who did not need those benefits. They already had those as part of their retirement and could work for the salary portion alone. Oh, I'm getting the cut. Okay, so anyway, these are some of the broader general findings of the Bifurcation Committee and I will be happy to take questions later and thank you very much.
I just want to mention, we have a hard stop at 12 noon, is that right? So, we have to watch the time management here pretty carefully. And we have folks coming in here, right? Okay. A wedding, we don't want to get in the way of that.
Are we invited?
Perhaps I could make my section really brief. I'm Tim Snyder. I was part of the Subcommittee that dealt with looking at contracting out for police services. Fellow members of that Committee were Charles Reichman, who was the lead for the Committee, and Mayberry Benson, neither of whom could be here today. So, I got, I got the distinction of being able to summarize for our group. Many of you, I think, I see familiar faces, attended forums and other presentations that we've given along the way, and so you've possibly already heard a lot of this material. So, I'm attempting to, I'm going to attempt to just sort of speed over the top of it and give you some of the highlights. To do our work, we quickly decided that what we needed to do is get out and talk to surrounding communities, which would be the most logical potential participants in a contracting kind of situation. So, that included Albany, El Cerrito, Richmond, Berkeley, UC Berkeley Police Department, East Bay Regional Parks, and the Sheriff's Office. We were able to engage with, with most of those entities and have one or more discussions with them. The East Bay Regional Parks declined, just based on lack of interest and/or current capacity. Berkeley likewise declined, thinking it would take away from their focus. The Sheriff's Office essentially would be willing to consider discussing things but didn't want to until it was a formal authorization and a more formal process. So, we actually didn't get to speak to the Sheriff's Department directly. But we did speak with cities that utilized the Sheriff's Services that could give us a benchmark of how that works. That included Arinda, Lafayette, Oakley, and Blackhawk. Now, some of these being less representative perhaps, but the idea was just to get a sense of Sheriff's contracting from them and how it worked. With all of these entities, we talked about the extent of, and options for services, the Kensington, identity of Kensington and presence in Kensington as being important factors. Organization, command structures, replacement of officers, handling Kensington programs that are somewhat special like Key Programs and Vacation Watch, which are unique. Willingness to provide services to Kensington and willingness of those entities to potentially hire Kensington existing officers if a decision was made to proceed towards contracting. One of the things we found out very quickly was there were some limitations on what we could actually achieve in these discussions and find out. And most importantly, that dealt with basically determining detailed and accurate cost comparisons. That is extremely dependent upon the definition of the services and a very formal process of actually going through iterations of how exactly would you structure a contract and what would be the specific details of coverage, et cetera. And most of the entities we just, we met with simply couldn't, couldn't go there until we decided to proceed further with a formal process. The other thing we couldn't do, we got a sense in talking to these people certainly about their organizations and we got a sense of their departments, but we really didn't go very deeply into really the quality of their departments and/or due diligence on the management of those communities, which is a very important factor when you, because if you look forward, the, the cost of their services and the quality of their services is only going to be as good as their management of those services in those city entities going forward. So, there certainly were limitations about what we could achieve there. Agencies that were willing, expressed a willingness to consider contracting, included Albany, El Cerrito, Richmond, University of California Police Department, and the Sheriff's Department, as I mentioned earlier, although no specifics of details there. They were all willing to support Kensington identity if that was considered important in terms of uniforms and cars, dedicated personnel to, to the area, and a presence in the community. They all suggested the most logical, well, and a couple in particular, that the most logical structure would be to-- logical structure would be to set it up as an additional beat to the surrounding, to their communities. They all indicated certainly it would require a three- to five-year minimum contract, given the costs and efforts associated with developing a contract. No guarantee for existing officers in terms of direct transfers. They all have their own criteria, and any existing officer would have to make a lateral transfer and could apply. But it would be totally up to those jurisdictions as to whether they would hire our existing At least two of the agencies we talked to suggested that costs could be less than our current costs for providing police services. Most of that would be related to simply economies of scale, size of departments. Our size of department is totally predicated on the coverage of basically having to provide 27, between the 24 hours, seven days a week, coverage requires the force size that we have. If the force sizes were equal with these other entities, if we demanded the same levels of staff, there would not be much difference relative to overall costs. As I mentioned before, East Bay Parks and Berkeley were unwilling to consider it at this time. Drifting into cost considerations, there are some that certainly have to be paid attention to in considering this going forward. There are certainly substantial transition costs associated with making a change. Basically, shutdown, ensuring coverage during shutdown, and startup costs associated with a new department, all of those would be passed on to us. Also, further feasibility studies or due diligence, the things that we couldn't do in complete detail as part of our efforts, would also be related to transition costs, possible other costs associated with meet and confer responsibilities associated with existing officers, costs associated with RFP process, cost negotiations, et cetera. There's a couple of elements of costs that are going to be ongoing regardless of what we do. And so there really is no difference, but they have to be certainly thought about and considered if you're going to compare an overall aggregate cost for contracting out versus staying in-house. And that is, first and foremost, CalPERS responsibilities associated with unfunded liabilities. Currently, based on the CalPERS report, and they have a method of amortizing these and spreading them out, there's, it's projected over the next five years that it's going to run $230,000 a year. That will be a cost that we have regardless of whether we contract out or don't contract out. Retired medical benefits obligations also are a factor that will continue even if we do contract out. That is simply for the people that are retired or will retire from Kensington prior to, if it's dissolved. And those run approximately $170,000 a year at this point. One footnote on CalPERS is that all of their magnitude, or projected magnitude of our unfunded liability is 2.5 million, but that's based on a 7.5% return assumption. And the last two years, they ran on a return of 2.2% and 0.6%. If you plug those numbers into the same scale, you're looking more at very substantial unfunded liabilities. But again, this is something that's there regardless of whether you contract out or not. The pros for contracting out are potential economies of scale associated with just being part of a larger entity where things are shared and you don't have to have individual functions that can be of a more shared nature. Also possibly, you can change services, the definition of what services you want, which allows you to scale the force. And it is largely just, really comes down to, you know, numbers of people because labor is the most predominant cost. Most of these entities all have the same kind of pay scale structures, and they're all part of CalPERS. Some, in varying degrees, have done a better job of managing that and have lower projected unfunded issues than others. But many are very similar to exactly what we have. There would be limitation on legal liabilities for police activities. These things would be inherited by the organization that's contracting. They would have to ensure that we have maintain, maintain full staffing in the event of disabilities or other types of things. You'd have access to a broader range of special services that larger departments have, ability to change out officers if they don't fit with the community, improved access to field supervision just because they are larger departments and always have somebody in a supervisory capacity on shift, less human resource management issues because they would do all the hiring and the firing. Opportunity to restructure might be easier for us just because it would be like turning a new leaf and we could define what we want as a community in going out and contracting, which is a more difficult issue perhaps in terms of trying to change internally. The cons associated with it are you lose control over a number of items if you contract out. If you disband in the department, it is likely it will never be reconvened because you'd have to go through the same kinds of transition costs to contract out and/or bring it back. Highly unlikely that if we disbanded, we would ever bring it back. We would no longer have direct control over negotiating salaries, benefits, et cetera. We would have to trust and totally be dependent upon the community that we chose to associate with for contracting to do a good job. No direct control over day-to-day operations, possible loss of identity, that's more of a perceived issue perhaps by members of the community, but it's real, that they could wear, we could tell them to wear and drive Kensington cars, wear Kensington uniforms, but it still, for some, I think, would feel like we're dependent on somebody else versus our own. Need for expanded capabilities. The board and the management of this would have to become different. Capabilities and actions related to qualifying the potential entities, due diligence, preparing and managing RFPs, the negotiations of the contracts, and the performance monitoring associated with the contracts are kind of a different set of skills than currently are needed, given that it's an in-house unit. And again, a con, another con is that of our existing officers, there would be no guarantee that any of them could directly transfer to the new forces. So collectively, I mean, we found that, you know, there are entities that are willing to do it. Some have indicated that it's potential with a slightly different structuring of services and such to be cost competitive or better, lower cost than we currently are incurring. But it's a big step. And in fact, I guess the one thing we noted was that we bumped up against, as much as we learned and found in this exercise, the reality that there's a lot more to learn. And in honesty, deeper studies into feasibility and due diligence of entities, if we're serious about moving forward, would be warranted before deciding to go down the path.
I get to go last as the representative of the least politically fraught topic on the agenda today. Excuse me. Okay, so I'm presenting on behalf of the consolidation subcommittee. My co-committee member, Gail Feldman, is over there. Chris Deppi was one of the other committee members. And I'll talk a little bit about who we spoke with as part of this process in a moment. But first, it's a little bit easy, I think, in Kensington to lose sight of the fact that not everything starts and ends with a local political discussion. And consolidation is one of those topics that actually came to us from the outside. So the strong push for consolidation came to Kensington from the state legislature, actually, which enacted legislation to quote, "encourage local agency formation commissions to use their municipal service reviews spheres of influence and boundary powers where feasible and appropriate to combine special districts that serve overlapping or adjacent territory into multi-function community services districts." So they did that because there's a large body of writing out there suggesting that that's a way to get to a more efficacious delivery of government services. So this pushed local LAFCOs, the local agency formation commissions, to consider where appropriate the idea of consolidation. So the Contra Costa County LAFCO brought this up as a topic in a municipal service review of fire district, of fire services, starting in 2007, I think it was, but finalized in 2009. So I think it's important to understand what merging of the districts would mean and what it wouldn't mean. So what this would mean would be a change in governance for both districts. The two districts would be merged, and what came on the other side would be something different from either district as it is today. It would not represent a change in services. The services provided would be the services provided. So this is about a change in governance, not a change in services. The districts would be merged into a single entity responsible for the current scope of services handled by the KFPD and the KPPCSD. And the resulting district by law would have to be a community service district because the community service districts like KPPCSD are empowered to provide fire protection services, but the converse is not true. Fire protection districts are not empowered to provide the services under the scope of the KPPCSD. LAFCO has the power to merge the two boards as well. So what would come on the back end would, could be an expanded board, likely seven or nine members composed of the board members of the two districts. They must be sitting board members. And that temporarily expanded board then contracts back down to five. So the governance of the new district would actually be hybrid mix of members of the two districts prior. So even the people involved would be different on the back end than the front end. In a 10-minute presentation, we spent hours presenting some of these process issues. I can't go through the process of consolidation or even the pros and cons in any detail. So I'm just going to say it's a, we provided a detailed and fairly lengthy description of what is a detailed and fairly lengthy process in the report, and I encourage you to read it. There are a number of names the process can take, as it takes different forms. Consolidation, you may have heard, has an official meaning, not just a colloquial one. So does reorganization. I'm not going to go into it. There can be a hybrid of these two things. It's quite interesting, actually, for those of you who care about this stuff. But the bottom line is, regardless of how you start and what path you take, at the end, the two districts are rolled into one. And the revenue, the assets, the contracts, everything is just folded into that new entity. Now, there have been historical concerns raised about the transfer of revenue as part of this process. We talked to quite a lot of people. We spoke to the fire district, most of whom are here today. But the people who were really informative on this particular subject were the auditor controller and Luanne Texera, who's head of, the executive director of LAFCO. She came and spent an entire evening here with us and the community. And I think it's pretty clear at this point that the chance of revenue losses from initiating this process is essentially zero. And that's because, it's a pretty straightforward process, actually, although lots of questions have been raised about it historically. But there's a circuit breaker on the process, so that the sides have to come to an agreement on revenue before anything can actually move forward. And so Kensington just has control. Kensington has the ability to say no at any point. So revenue seems to be, and that issue seems to be a red herring. So we've compiled an extensive list of pros and cons, and I debated picking one pro and one con to talk about. And in thinking about this, I was over 10 minutes on the pro. So I decided I would just leave the report to you. I really encourage you to read this report and go through it and ask questions. Instead of talking about pros and cons, I'm going to talk about something that's essential for the community to understand in even assessing the pros and cons. If you really want to have an educated opinion about this, and indeed, any of the governance options that we are discussing as part of this process, then the final section of our report is really critical to read and absorb. And that's on the finances of the two districts. So we really thought that understanding the financial layout and structure of our two districts was essential for, an essential part of this discussion, and so we provided that as a background. We went through audited financials for the last 20 years. The numbers were compiled by Debbie Russell, who's the accountant for both our districts. And this is now a spreadsheet and all of the raw data, some of which I had to pay to get myself, were, will be part of the compiled archive that the committee produces along with all the code sections that we gathered in support of this process. So there will be a large archive, and we will be able to track both districts' finances and how they actually proceed relative to how they've projected they'll proceed going forward. But so briefly regarding the financial background. Post Prop 13, the two districts have a very different situation and structure with regard to revenue. The final quirky shakeout, let's call it, for the special districts didn't happen until almost the mid-'90s, which is kind of amazing when you think about it. That last phase increased ad valorem tax revenue for the fire district and decreased it for the KPPCSD and widened the gap between them significantly. And so that's what came in right before our review period, which began in the 1995-96 fiscal year. Currently, KFPD receives about 30% of the ad valorem property tax revenue. KPPCSD receives about 13%. That's about $3.26 million for the fire district, and about $1.48 million, 92% of total revenue for the fire district, and 49% of revenue for KPPCSD. There are two special taxes as a result, making up the body of the rest of the revenue for the KPPCSD. These currently total a little over 500 a parcel for the police district. It's about a little over 80 a parcel, the one special tax that exists for the fire protection district. So 20 years ago, at the beginning of our review, revenue and expense, operating expense for the two districts were almost identical. I mean, almost, as in to the dollar, almost identical. And this is actually logical when you think about it, because the two districts are staffed almost identically. So from a driver of public expense, 10 bodies or 10 bodies. On the expense side, in the 1996 to 2006 period, the cost of providing fire services increased at roughly twice the rate of police services. It about doubled in that time period. Those were the first years of contracting. And so we don't really go into that. We just compiled the numbers, but that may be interesting for our discussions down the road. However, and the revenue growth, those of you who were here may remember that property values in Kensington in the late '90s went, actually doubled. And so this was fairly convenient because it mitigated what was a pretty significant cost increase. And since 2006, expenses for the two districts have essentially paralleled. There's been no difference in trend. We lay this out. We, in addition, we examined the details of operating expenses, and we point to some areas deserving of attention with regard to KPCC expenses in particular. And we tried to look at future operating expenses, but we, this was really outside the scope. This is something that needs to be done for both districts in a careful and thorough way. Finally, and quite importantly, we modeled the two districts as one. So we looked at what a consolidated district would appear like from a financial perspective since we had it all in a giant spreadsheet. And that indicated for the last review year that we looked at, the fiscal year 2014-15, a model merged district would have had about $400,000 in annual tax revenue in excess of operating and capital expenses, total operating and capital expenses, and a total fund balance of a little more than $7.4 million. So in conclusion, I very much hope that, particularly the final section, but overall, this report will help you all in the greater Kensington community understand the financial challenges that we all are facing through our two districts. These are our funds, our money, our assets, that we are essentially responsible for managing through our two boards. And particularly with respect to evaluating, excuse me, future And particularly with respect to evaluating, excuse me, future capital expenditure programs, we're talking about, we've had a lot of discussion about the modification of this building. The discussion coming on the public safety building dwarfs anything that we've discussed previously. And I hope that this report will allow you to examine those issues, examine the greater governance issues that we're talking about and equip you well for the discussions that we need to have as a community.
So, we can open up for questions?
Yeah, so we're, um, do we want to structure this so we take each topic one at a time?
Certainly.
All right. I guess we'll just treat...
Well, do you want to just open it? The commit, okay. Open it up.
All right, we'll open it up and we'll treat members of the public and board members the same. So, come on up.
Hi, I'm Donna.
Oh, yeah, actually, I'm sorry, just a time control thing here. So, we have roughly an hour, okay?
Well, I have to go myself.
So, if we could try to keep the comments concise and short. Okay, thank you.
Got it. I'm Donna Stanton, 20-year resident, wife of a member of the RIT group. So, I have a couple of questions or comments. Right now, in terms of the, I'm happy to see that it appears that the, that there's pro to having a separation of the management, the police chief and the manager. Because I feel as if, and the idea that a part-time manager, to me, seems to make sense because at this point, the combined position, I'm thinking the chief of police has to spend a great deal of time and may not really be more than a, if, if even, a part-time manager at this point. Now, I mean, chief, interim chief Hart, you may have something different to say about that, but that's, that's what I'm thinking, that the half-time position makes sense and probably would not take away that much for, from us. The bigger issue that I have, and I've thought about this for months, is why in the world is the Kensington Police Protection, whatever we're called, KPPCSD, why do they have any reason to be discussing the fire, consolidating with the fire department without seeing representation from the fire department in on this discussion? I don't see any of that. So, to me, it's a, it's like a takeover kind of thing. And I feel as if the expense, just for example, from the RIT, which was purely a prideful situation that could have been handled within the first couple of weeks. When my husband came and told me about this issue, he said, oh, it'll just be a couple of weeks. And then we, $200,000 later or whatever, I don't have specifics, and going through the negotiations, which was absolutely horrible, is based out of pride. And so, the costs that I see with the various litigations that the KPPCSD has been involved with has nothing to do with the fire department as far as I can see. So, I just want to make that point, that I think that our, our board has made poor decisions and therefore wanted to attach to an organization, a separate organization in our town that happens to have made better decisions and has more money. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Could I ask folks, you know, we, we, this is an informational session today. It's an opportunity to get information from folks who've spent an enormous amount of time trying to adduce that information. So, there will be a time at which we're getting more into decision-making and that, I think, will be a better time to express opinion as opposed to asking questions. Anyway, come on up.[865.32][865.32][music] Well, that was kind of a question. Anybody want to answer that?
I think the question was, how come the fire department didn't take part in this consolidation subcommittee work?
Well, the fire board president is here. He could speak to it. I mean, our committee can.
Well, I can, I can speak to it from the, from the committee's standpoint. I, and I won't dream to speak of it from the fire board, but Don, you should stand up. But from the committee perspective, as the, when the consolidation subcommittee was formed, I went to the next fire board meeting, this was in March of the year, and asked, of this year, and asked the fire board to consider how they wanted to engage with the subcommittee. That was the first opportunity that we had to meet with them. We talked about how that would be done. They agendized it for April. This is all in the fire board records. At the agenda in April, it was basically decided to go down a process where the sub, where they did not engage with us directly. The subcommittee was asked to provide written questions to the board and, to the fire board, and the fire board basically refused to meet with us or appoint a point person or subgroup that would actually talk with us. So, eventually, we did that. The responses to the questions were done in a meeting. There was a long discussion from fire board members about the issue of consolidation, and that was basically all we could get.
Nina, did you want, hold on a second.
I just wanted to add one thing to the relationship. Also, during the process, we had a number of correspondence with the Local Agency Formation Commission Director. And at some point during that process, both the chief of the fire department, not the district, but the actual fire department chief, Lance Maples, requested that all communications between our committee and LAFCO be shared with him. And I believe also one of the directors on the KPPCSD asked for the same information, Vanessa Cordova. So, basically, during the entire process, every communication that we had with the Local Agency Formation Commission about our questions about, you know, LAFCO process was shared with the fire chief and with a member of your board.
I would also say one other thing. The fire board decided to form an ad hoc subcommittee, I believe it's been referred to by fire board members, as the anti-consolidation subcommittee, that asked to meet with us. That meeting happened a few weeks ago in order to have their opinions expressed about our report. This was a few days before we were finalizing the last copy of the report. So, we received their opinions in that private meeting and then a few days later in the last public meeting. So, those comments were received late in the game, shall we say.
Nina, did you want to speak? Would you mind?
I'm Nina Harmon. I'm with the Kensington Fire Protection District, and I wanted just to explain our view of this. We actually spoke about this in that meeting with Gail and with Rick. And Rick said the same thing, pretty much, with less detail, but he said pretty much the same thing that the ad hoc committee had said, would you like to come and sit with us? And so, I want to start with the very beginning of this process. I read, I read your agendas in your minutes, and I read your agenda, which said you were about to take action on what turned out to be the ad hoc committee to discuss merger. And I was stunned and our board, I brought it up to the board, and they were, they used words a lot stronger than what I used when I came to speak to you. So, the next night, I came and I spoke to you, and some of you remember that. And I said, I was asked by my board to express surprise that we had not been consulted or advised or at least given the courtesy of some kind of involvement because that's a pretty big issue, we felt. And while everyone nodded and was very pleasant about it, I was the one that had to reach out to some of you and talk with you privately about that. There was no board invitation. And I'll be honest with you, we're a board. The invitation to be a part of the process should have come from the board. That's my belief, that while the committee is important and they're charged by you, they would not be the official request or invitation. The second part of it is that we did not hear for a long, long time from the board. I realized I had an option to go. It's not that any of us didn't know that we could have sat in, but it was not our committee. There were many things to discuss that were not relevant to our board. As you know, it's only merger that we are concerned about as a board. And I thought about it and then I thought, no, I'm going to wait and see what it is they are, excuse me, going to be talking about. Rick did come to our meeting. We were told the entire ad hoc committee wanted to speak to us. We were surprised that only one person came, and I think we said so. And Rick did submit questions, and I'll be honest, I don't remember what we said, Rick. And I do remember at that time, you said, why don't you come and sit in with us? I do remember that invitation, but I have to tell you, I had to be reminded of it because I did not hear it as an invitation. So, I will give to Rick that he invited us, but I think you understand that we did not feel invited to the table. Certainly, come and sit and listen is not the same, and I think you would agree with that, board, is not the same as being asked to be an active member in a process that would, could result in information that would dissolve our district. Since that time, I don't believe we've been reached out to. We did form a committee. Janice and I are the committee. We reached out to you. I was very happy to meet with you. I thought it was a very productive discussion. We were passionate, as you can imagine, and quite, because we are passionate of our views on this. But I thought there was a reasonable exchange. They listened, we listened. I think we agreed to disagree. There were some changes I think Gail was willing to look at. I found her to be very open. And I, I want to say to you one thing I've said to Gail before, and that is that she has been pro-merger long before this issue came up. This is not new. She's not jumping on the bandwagon just for whatever reason. It's here, and I think that speaks to some integrity. I do, and I've appreciated her honesty about that. Disagree with you heartily, we will continue to disagree. But, and I don't feel you invited us either, but I do think at least you've been consistent, and that's important to all of us. So, I don't know if I've explained accurately why we did not feel invited, but let me go over it again by saying, we felt it should come from you because we are your peers. And that while the committee invited us, it was kind of a casual invitation, Rick, I give it to you that you mentioned it, it did not feel like an invitation. We did not mean to snub them in any way or not participate, but it was not our committee nor will we really send written information or something that would have been a little, a little more formal than come on down. Does that help at all? Would you like to, somebody would like to comment?
Well, I would, I would like to comment a little bit if I may. I have not felt myself particularly welcome whenever I've asked for dialogue on issues related to this. You may remember that Pat and I attended a meeting a year ago, last June, of the fire board. And I asked, I had actually talked with, I think, then Board President Nagel about having a joint finance committee meeting so we could go over together what the financial picture looked like. And that was my invitation to, why don't we work together and look at this finance issue and get some information? You know, I don't want to have an opinion on this until I know all the facts, and I don't think any of us should. I think we should welcome somebody who's willing to roll up their sleeves, donate all this time to actually find out what the situation is, what our statutory mandates are, all of that stuff. It takes having information to make decisions, not just strength of opinion.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, you know, we were told, thank you, but no thank you, in June. You, you were nice enough to say, if you have questions, please get them to us and we'll be happy to answer them. I appreciated that. And that's kind of what we, we started a process like that. So, I don't think anybody intended to hurt anybody's feelings here.
We're not hurt.
Well, you, you look.
We're concerned.
You look like your feelings are hurt.
We're not hurt. We are professionals.
All I'm saying is, we're leaders, okay?
We are concerned.
We are leaders of this community. We all serve the same constituents. Why don't we work together to get the information? We haven't engaged in a decision-making process. These people are not expressing their opinion, they're giving you information.
Yes, yes.
I would think you as a community leader would want to get the information first and then come to an opinion, frankly.
So, can I suggest that we move on?
Yes.
Because I, for one, have questions that I'd like to ask the committee as well.
Yeah, yeah, me, and I agree with you. We're getting into he said, she said.
Let's try not to fight, okay? Let's get along, okay?
Yeah, well, I want to talk about the notion that we don't talk. I'm here to tell you, we talk a lot, but that, you're right, that is for a different discussion. Thank you, Pat, and thank you for listening.
Appreciate you speaking.[1461.36][1461.36][applause] Okay, please come on.
Can I just?
Can I say one thing? I know we want to move along, but I do have to apologize to the fire board because from the very beginning, we did not approach them. I was embarrassed when we first, in June of 2014, when we began the framework and I realized that we had started the discussion. I was also at the meeting, thanks to, I'm going to acknowledge you again, Mr. Knight, years ago, a couple of years ago when I was campaigning, told me that it was shameful that the KPPCSD didn't have a presence at fire board meetings. I started attending. I've attended regularly for the last two years. It's been very helpful. The fire board has been very helpful to me as a, as a special, special district member. I was at the meeting that Mr. Welsh is talking about, Director Welsh is talking about. Unfortunately, I think at that time, it was presented a little bit, it wasn't a welcome invitation, in my opinion, from my board. It was an accusation about the accuracy of the finances.
That is not true. That is not true.
I don't want to delve into it, but that would be...
President Nagel and I talked beforehand about going to that meeting. It was a totally cordial affair. There was no hostility whatsoever except from you and Vanessa Cordova.
I will reiterate my request that we move on.
Let's move on.
Okay. I reiterate my request that we move on, okay? Let's please move on. We're here to get, get information from the committee members.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Let's go. Come on.
My name is Katia De Niergard, and I have a quest, the same question. Could I not be interrupted, please? I have the same question for the three subcommittees. Sure. I have the three, same question for the three subcommittees, which is, if you are pro further exploring the change, what are the next steps for Kensington? So, for example, if you're pro trying to split the GMCO peak position, what are the next steps to do to get that done? Similarly, with the other two subcommittees. And I want to just unpack consolidation a little bit. I understood you used to say, Rick, that LAFCO can force a merger of the two districts. And I've also heard many times that the fire board does not want its district merged, that it, it was against that. So, could you please reconcile if, if one did want to go further with the idea of consolidation, what would be, in your opinion, the next steps? Thank you.
It's for the questions.
First of all, I neglected to thank my other subcommittee members, and I do want to recognize David Spath, Simon Brofman, and Garen Corbett, who are also on the bifurcation subcommittee. I was flustered there, so, thank you guys. Yeah, I think on the bifurcation issue, the biggest challenge is resources. That is the number one big challenge. It's either, that either translates into finding funds in the existing budget or possibly deleting services in other areas. It's, it's a resource, it's somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000. So, that's, and it's not necessarily money, but it's a, it could be a trade, not necessarily new money. The next most important thing really is to assess what the needs are in the community and would a part-time general manager be adequate? All those things about having a strategic plan, having clear direction, having management in place, having policies in place so that that person can do the job and succeed as a part-time position. There are a lot of steps before that decision can be determined, and there's a lot of cleaning up the house that would have to be done to make sure everybody's on the same page. So, I would say those are the two biggest things before you even consider seeking a, a general manager as a separate position.
Do you have any specific suggestions as to how to go about getting at those issues?
Well, I mean, it would be a strategic planning process that the board would have to go through and to work, to make sure that the direction for the community by the board is clear so that that person could actually carry out those duties. So, it's a really more of a strategic planning process and clarity of direction as a unified entity. That would be very important. Okay.
With regard to the subject of contracting, one of the things that became somewhat abundantly clear in our, one of the forums that we had, was the more, was just the subcommittee forum that was less formal, was that we don't have a really good grasp on the will of the community in terms of what they want for police services. And that has a significant bearing on not only how we structure and manage that if we have our own department. we have our own department, or if we contract out. That's kind of the starting point. So a better, and I think the Board is, the Board needs to serve the collective will of the community, not simply those that occasionally show up, regardless of which side of an equation they're on or what their opinion is. So in order, in order to do that, I mean, as a suggestion, I mean, one needs to think about, how can you find that out? Perhaps you can find that out through a well-structured, truly random, independent survey. That is a mechanism. That's not a small feat in itself. We went through a couple of survey attempts, and you quickly realize how limited you are in terms of, you know, exactly what you can cover and ask, but also, if you're not willing to take the step to truly make it a genuine, random process, you're not going to get, you're not going to get the true answer of what is the will of the community. So that's, to me, that's a big deal, and it starts to define the services, whether you do it internally or externally. I'm not, and you hope that it's a public that's informed. You hope it's a public that's been exposed to, you know, what are the current services. I don't think most people think about it, until they have a problem, one way or the other. But, you know, so that's one area. Secondly, a second step, I definitely feel that more feasibility, more detailed feasibility studies need to occur to start getting at, looking at accurate cost comparisons. And we just, we went a fair distance, but we couldn't, we couldn't get to the next step, which actually would give us reasonably accurate cost comparisons. Thirdly, due diligence of entities that we might consider for contracting. We, as a community, need to know and understand exactly how they manage their current forces and situations, if we are going to consider them doing it for us, because it would be signing it over. And so there just needs to be more due diligence, and it extends beyond simply the, quote, "police department" and how it is operated. But what is the management of that community, and what's the projection of whether or not the management of that community will continue to be moving in a positive direction?
Can I take you one step further with a follow-up question on that? There, some people have suggested it's time to go, to get more information, we should put out an RFP. It's sounding to me like you think that we need to engage in more fact-finding, due diligence, as you call it, before we engage in the RFP process. Could you clarify that, please?
Yeah, I definitely think so. I don't think that we know enough at this point to be able to put together a specific enough RFP that would be able to carry the day. I mean, work needs to be done to get more definition about exactly what services it is we want, before you can get to the RFP step.
Thank you. Third question, right? That Rick will answer.
Right, so let me just add one thing to what Tim was just saying. As part of the financial analysis, we also compiled a lot of data on the, from LAFCO primarily, on the per-capita cost of services for police and for fire. And for fire, our per-capita costs are far and away the highest in Contra Costa County. For police services, the per-capita costs are actually kind of in the middle of the pack. And what that means is that when you go out and assess the cost of other agencies providing services to us, that's actually a little bit more competitive and nuanced, and as Tim said, it really matters what you ask for. So I'm going to end with saying that there's an educational part and an information part regarding the next steps for all of these things, which are the same, which is the community needs to start to understand these issues and become a little more sophisticated. So that's where I'll start with the consolidation issue, is I think it's really, it begins with an issue of public education. I won't dwell, I think this is for pros and cons of consolidation. There's been a lot of, I'll choose my word carefully, commentary that is adrift from the facts. On the subject of consolidation, we present quite a lot of facts and leave the reader the ability to connect those to policy, but you have to become cognizant of the facts in order to do that. So to your specific question, LAFCO has the statutory authority to do quite a number of things, including force a consolidation. You know, there can be a district, you could imagine, out there, which is so poorly run that LAFCO actually has to come in and destroy it, for the good of humanity. That is not the case in Kensington, and I don't think that there is any reason to expect that LAFCO would, of their own accord, wade into a fight here. And Luann basically said, the head, the executive director of LAFCO, Luann Texera, basically said that she would not engage in such an enterprise, and she put it back on the community. This is a time for the community to engage and to understand, there are pros and cons. There is a financial background to why this is even an issue that the community needs to understand. From a next step, she also made it clear that when the community has been educated, and we could talk about what that looks like at another time, maybe, I would say, the community needs to be surveyed, just as we ask the question, "What would police services look like going forward?", we should ask that question anyway. I mean, just from a fiduciary responsibility and responsible community engagement perspective. What do we want the future of Kensington governance to look like? If we set it up today, it would never look like it looks now. We've already seen, you know, among two boards. We would never do that to ourselves willingly. So what would we want it to look like? The community needs to take responsibility for asking that question and thinking down the road. And then we probably need to poll the community very specifically and ask the community what it thinks about ideas like consolidation.
Would a non-binding referendum be as good as a survey?
I can't answer that question specifically, I'm sorry.
Yeah, same idea, though.
One other, one other thing, as far as the next step on the consolidation, that we didn't do in our report that specifically, is to look at projections for the next, say, five. You could go out 10 years, that's a less sure thing, but we really need to understand what's going to happen in this community over the next five years, at least, from a expenditure and revenue perspective. And I know there's lots of factors out there that we can't predict, but we do, I mean, we can take historical trends, we can do a lot of things to project, and look at what is the financial status of the both districts, to say whether or not we can continue down the path, and what the possible outcomes of, you know, making decisions, whether you contract out, or whether we keep services exactly as they are. Can we afford them under our certain, our current scenarios that we project, and what a possible consolidation would provide? Would it provide a benefit, or would it not add anything beneficial to the community as a whole?
One --
Thank you.
-- follow-up to Gail's good point. Luckily, Finance Committee member Rob Furman and the Finance Committee at large are working on a five-year projection model, so that will be some information that we're gathering along the way.
Let me just add that what you've heard from everybody is that the community has to be engaged, and that's probably the most important message that you're going to hear from all of us, regardless of what the task is and what the issue is.
Yeah, and, you know, you look at this room, we're trying to engage the community today, and we're not getting a huge turnout, so we need to figure out ways to penetrate and get people really to focus on these issues. I do want to point out that a survey is not always the absolute best, most definitive way to go, but we were pretty good, I think, in getting the garbage contract, figuring out exactly what the people of Kensington wanted through a professionally-conducted survey by HF&amp;H. So that might be one of the tools we used, certainly not the only one, but it's one way to sort of get, you know, further into the fabric of the community and try and figure out what the average person wants. Come on up.
This was apparently a good report, which I can't doubt, if it's nice and long, but it seems that there's information that's not in there upon which a lot of the decisions depend. And what I'd like to get either you or the Board to indicate is, what now? Now that we've got the report, what is the Board's role now? How does this decision get made? I mean, is it a thing where the Board takes the report and mulls it over and discusses it, and has public meetings, and makes a decision? Or exactly, what's that, what's that process? I think that you've kind of given the Board some instructions, like engage the public and get more information, and maybe conduct surveys, but I don't think we have a clear idea of what the process is and what the result is, and we seem to have a situation where the other Board in question is, I mean, unanimously opposed. How do you, how do you even move forward on that issue? I'd also like to suggest that maybe the summary be published in the outlook, if that would be a good start.
Well, only that we were asked to develop findings and pros and cons, and at least from my perspective, I'll leave that, I'll show the comments to the rest of my colleagues, that it now is in the Board's hands to make the decision, Peter, as to how to go forward and all of these issues.
Yeah, let me, let me speak to that, if I can, real quickly. You know, the report is crying out for next steps. What, you know, somebody has to decide, what are the next steps? It is seeming to me like next steps include yet another phase of fact-finding, digging into more detail, and also doing that in conjunction with getting a sense of how the community feels about these issues. So I think we need to have that discussion the next regular Board meeting, begin that discussion, anyway. Come on up.
My question was essentially the same. Even Luann Texera has called for the Board to conduct a survey that would, that would have essentially bullet points of pros and cons, and she feels that Kensington is engaged enough that that would engage people further and give them a sense of engagement with these particular issues. And so I would, I hope that that happens soon. And I imagine that, I guess my question is, is the, will the Board appoint a committee to do this kind of community engagement on these particular issues and to move forward on these issues, or will the Board itself do that? I'm just, I guess I'm echoing what Peter asked, is how will this happen?
Well, I would suggest that we begin discussion in the October meeting. We do have an election coming up, and I think, you know, in all likelihood, this is an issue the new Board really ought to tackle, but we can certainly tee it up for them to get started once, once the new folks are in.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Hasai, and my question is for Tim, related to the contracting issue. I would agree with the statement that I've heard a lot of commentary addressed from the facts, as I've been talking to residents door-to-door. I've heard a lot of fear about what contracting for services could mean, and that's unfortunate, given that we're really still in a phase of understanding how that could provide additional value for Kensington and work. My question for you, Tim, is, why didn't the Subcommittee talk to the Fire District about their experience on contracting? I understand that it's a different, you know, type of service, but it was really interesting to me, because we've had a 20-year experiment, if you will, or, you know, very stable situation for 20 years around contracting, and I was just curious why they weren't an agency that you spoke to about how contracting worked and how it happened for the Kensington Fire District.
We were really more in, we were in an exploratory stage of really more trying to engage with specific surrounding entities and agencies to determine their willingness. We didn't get to the point of thinking about exactly what is the structure of the contract. Our efforts just, you know, stopped short of that.
You were just more concerned about agencies that could potentially provide services as opposed to the experience of contracting?
We wanted to explore, yeah, we wanted to explore all of the surrounding entities to Kensington, and also those who had direct experience with the Sheriff's Department, to determine really the basic structure of the organizations, and if they could, and if they were willing to provide services to us.
Yes, I got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Actually, I'd like to comment on that, if I could, Sylvia. I think that's kind of an excellent, right-in-front-of-your-face suggestion. Why don't you talk to them? So I think, you know, as we move forward, we should, you know, give a good, hard look at how that's worked out and see if we can, would you like to join us in that? That's, okay, let's patch this up and start working together.
Perfect. Mission accomplished.
It's, it falls into, that would be a next step category, is to start looking at structure of contracts, because as we get into, I mean, we did look, enough, you need, you need to understand whether they're going to be, you know, configured on a percentage basis, or whether they're going to be configured on a flat-rate basis, and there's examples of both. But we didn't get into the nuances of what should a contract look like. That is something that's to be done.
Celia Conchas. I have, I noticed that with the bifurcation and the contracting out, there were pros and cons given in the findings that you presented for supporting or not supporting the, whatever the activity was. I didn't hear that with consolidation, and I am wondering whether you could tell me some reasons that you think it would be worth not consolidating? I would like to hear that, or did you find none?
Yeah, there's a list of pros and cons in the consolidation section. You have to wade into the report.
I see. I didn't hear any when you gave your --
No, I believe, my comment was, I could take a pro and a con and take the entirety of my 10 minutes on one of them, and so I decided to talk about them at all and encourage you to read the report.
Do you think you could give us a 60,000-foot, quick pro and con?
I really am only interested in the reasons for keeping an independent Fire District, because you gave us ample reasons for not consolidating.
Oh, actually, I don't, I don't believe I --
Well, I've heard you --
Ask me the question one more time, more simply.
Would you please tell us some reasons why you think it would be good to retain an independent Fire District?
Tell us some of the cons.
Right, so the number-one con is that the Fire Board, actually, before the committee framework was even, my first Fire District meeting happened to be when Don was appointed, and he and every other member of the Fire District in front of Leonard Schwartzberg and myself, apropos of nothing, came out and said, "We're irrevocably opposed to consolidation." That's, yeah, that's the number-one con that I see, because that was before any facts were established on the ground, and in fact, with a storyline that turns out to be largely based on incorrect assumptions. So when your mind's made up, you're not going to have a rational discussion, and it's not going to improve your governance, and the biggest con is that we shouldn't go through that.
Okay, okay, can we hear more cons, Rick? That's enough of that, we got that, okay? How about more cons?
Um, no, I think she was just asking for cons.
Cons of consolidation, that's what she asked.
Right, so there are people who very much like the segregation of Fire Services away from, shall we say, the fraught tension and chaos of the KPPCSD Board meetings. And indeed, Fire District meetings are fairly simple. Revenue isn't largely affected by a Fire District decision, nor is the great expenditure of the Fire District. It's a pretty simple, cut-and-dry process, and people like it that way. And I think there's a question as to whether, there's a question as to whether or not that would be disturbed to the detriment of Fire Services in the community.
I don't think you've asked the question to my satisfaction, of why it would be good to maintain and keep an independent Fire District.
He's trying to answer that question, Celia. Listen to him.
The best thing for us to do is to read the cons. If you didn't read the cons, you can read them out of the report. That's our fairest way.
Celia, the report is on the Internet, and I would certainly recommend that you look at it and read through all of the pros and all of the cons, because it's going to take a little while to go through all those. I don't think it's fair to the rest of the individuals.
I don't think it's fair to the rest of the individuals who want to ask questions. And we have a wedding to go to in 25 minutes.
Yes. I did attend all but one, or possibly two, of the ad hoc committee meetings. So I really did hear you all the time.
And let me just commend you, Celia, for being one of the few who did due diligence and showed up all the time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Celia. More questions?
Yes, Anthony Knight. This is mostly addressed to Tim. When we came to a contracting arrangement for the fire department, part of that arrangement was to have a local firehouse. We have our local firehouse, Public Safety Building, staffed with officers there, with fire people there. An individual, a citizen, can go down there, they can talk to them, they have computers, they have files, they have fire engines. Now, yeah, I noticed this. Do you imagine that if we contract out for police services, that we will keep also a station house here, which will be staffed by police officers in uniforms? They will have the files and the computers and the cars there as well. The reason that I'm quite nervous about this is because you mentioned that when you talked to other surrounding communities, that they said the arrangement they would come to is making Kensington just another beat. And I don't know if any of you know this, but the whole of the Berkeley Hills here, which is probably an area as big as Kensington, is covered by one beat officer. So in every eight-hour shift, they've got one car circulating around there. And I could well imagine that that could be an arrangement that you might consider for Kensington. A citizen could not, under that arrangement, go down and talk to an officer, discuss an issue, or feel that the service was close by. This has not become clear in any of the discussion that I've heard today, and I'm hoping you'll bring some clarity to it right now.
It was one of the points that we discussed with all of the entities that we talked with. And let's narrow the field down now to, let's say, Albany, El Cerrito, Richmond. We talked to, and you see, PD, we talked to all of them in the context of, A, both identity of officers and cars. They were all willing to engage in that and have specific individuals assigned to.
Not the question.
And, and have a physical presence.
Physical presence.
Physical presence.
I want you to say the word "station house."
They, we asked, and they all indicated that they would be willing to staff that, put staff in the Public Safety Building during a set number of hours of the day. And it didn't get down to the specifics of, are they going, they would treat that as their effectively branch office. Yeah, you know what? What I got from the report, Anthony, was that, you know, they're willing to do just about anything we ask for within reason, as long as we're willing to pay for it. And so the issue is, is that an important issue of the community, which we need to figure out? I'm going to guess that it is. And secondly, if it is an important issue, how much would that cost to get that service from the entity we contract with?
As a board member who's got two years left on her term, I'm willing to say that if we go further and explore the issue of contracting out, I absolutely want a physical presence in Kensington. I would, I'm going on record as saying, I want you to be able to go down there between specific hours and contact an officer. I don't want to drive by. I'm not interested in that for my family or for my neighborhood. I want a physical presence with officers. And frankly, I'll, I mean, maybe I could be reeducated, but I really like our Kensington Police Badge. My sons and husband wear it on their Boy Scout uniforms. They're the sponsoring agency for Troop 100. I like a presence here. Whatever form that ultimately comes from, but I like, I want our officers in our uniforms.
Next question.
A quick question. Will there be printed copies of the entire report available at the KPPCSD office? It's about 200 pages, if I'm correct. I mean, I.
Absolutely. I will put one at the library. Absolutely.
Want like a reference copy for people to go in, or you want, let's hand them out?
I'm wondering whether or not you're planning on having some available for citizens to pick up.
Well, it's rather expensive, but I guess we could do that.
Let's do it this way. Let's get a small amount of them. Let's encourage people to download them and read them if they have that capability. We can have a few available in the stations.
I was just wondering. Thanks.
This is a positive thing. I wanted to echo what Rochelle had to say. I was just speaking with interim director Hart about an issue. About 3:00, 3:30 in the morning, somebody rang my bell and kind of hung on it. And now that I'm alone, it scared the hell out of me. And I called 911. This was just a couple of weeks ago. And I was, Sergeant Barrow was the one that came that morning. And I called back 911 and said, please make sure that he calls me to let me know what's happened. And then I followed up on it. And I would, I mean, I was shaking very hard. It scared the heck out of me. It was a drunk that somehow got left on my block. And I did hear that he rung somebody else, my next-door neighbor's bell, as well. And so knowing that we have a presence is very important to me. So thank you.
Thanks for the comment. Anybody else like to ask a question? Any final thoughts from board members? Oh, some questions, a question from Pat.
I just have to find them, hold on. So I'm interested in the contracting out person. I guess that's you, Tim. What kind of a bargaining position would we be in going into a contracting out negotiation and after the first three-to-five-year contract? I'm just curious, because I don't want to go to a situation where it's bait and switch.
Well, I don't think any of the entities that we talked to would be interested in a bait and switch either. They all talked in terms of, you know, needing to be at least three years, preferably somewhat longer in, you know, in initial duration to even make it feasible to go through the transition. Period costs and mechanics. And once established, I think those entities would not, any of the entities that we talked to would not, you know, really relish the idea of, oh, let's just do it for a while and/or not renew.
That's actually not my question, my concern.
I guess I'm maybe not as, I'm not as experienced to know from a contracting standpoint of this type of contracting, to know what kind of hooks can be put into the contract to ensure that it runs for a longer duration. It's worth mentioning, though, that the situation with the county sheriff, all of the communities that contract with the county sheriff are on a year-to-year update. And the sheriff basically comes yearly and presents the price of every position, every level, every service, every item. And it's, here it is, take it or leave it. No negotiation. So whatever costs and things will be happening on the county sheriff's side, basically just stream right through. And the only choice that those communities have is to either go establish their own or stay with the contract. Were you able to get a handle on, over time, how their, year-over-year, how their costs either stabilized or increased or decreased? It's pretty variable. It's pretty variable. Arinda Lafayette and Danville did a collective study in about 2009 because they became very concerned that they heard significant costs were headed their way. And they did a study that actually tried to frame that on the low side and the high side and showed that they would be, to their advantage economically, to move away from the sheriff and establish their own departments. They chose not to do so. At the core of that, those communities are unique in that their city structure is one of a defined contribution nature, where they simply put aside 13% at this point, it was 10% back in 2009, as the employee benefit towards pension. And the individuals, it goes into, you know, IRA, 401K-type structures or whatever. And that's it. They do not have defined benefit programs. They have no unfunded liabilities. They don't have CalPERS. They don't, they don't deal in that world. So they have a more predictable, a much more predictable model.
Can I just follow up before you go? So here's why I'm concerned about this. Because we know how much a variance in our budget, given our limited budget, can mean for our district. And so if we are suddenly at the whim of another entity who decides to give a big increase to their police officers that we would never have agreed to, it sounds like we're stuck because the cost of reinstituting our own district is prohibitive. And so I just think it's something we need to be thinking about, that all of a sudden we lose control over one of the things that has been at the heart of our financial issues in this community, which is the unpredictability of our budget from year to year, whether it be legal costs or something else. So that's just my comment. I defer to Chuck.
Let Chuck, and then you, okay? Just let Chuck.
Go ahead and stand up there. I was just going to ask the same question Pat did, which is, once you contract with these people and you start down the road, you kind of lose your leverage about making any changes. You can't very well say, no, we don't want a 10%. Or in the fire district's case, a seven-and-a-half percent increase. We want to go back to what we had. Once that cow's out the barn door, it's very tough to do. I think you lose the leverage. That is an issue for this community to consider as it moves forward, however. And I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were in line. No, this might not be an adequate answer, but I, this might not be an adequate answer, but I asked that exact question at a previous meeting, and I can't remember who gave the answer. But what it was, basically, was the important thing is having savvy, professional negotiators. That's where, if we should decide that that's the way to go, the way to prevent getting in that situation is having a very competent, professional negotiator who will make sure that there are parameters in the contract that can dictate, on a long-term basis, how much, you know, ceilings and floors, or how much or how little costs can go up. Again, that might not be an adequate answer, but that's what we're.
Well, actually, good, oh, I'm sorry. Could we get your name, please?
Oh, Maria McCauley.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, can I respond? Sure, go ahead. Briefly. The negotiation of salaries and benefits, et cetera, for any of the communities that we talked to is going to be their jurisdiction, over which we would have no control. They're going to do what they're going to do. That's why due diligence, from the standpoint of studying and evaluating communities that you potentially want to contract with, to determine that you're willing and you're confident to just put your, to put it in their hands, that that's extremely important in choosing who the business partner's going to be. Okay, okay. Thank you. Could we hear from Mr. Domer, please?
Hey, I'm Don Domer. I'm the president this year of the fire district. And we have this living example.
Our sound system's not that great.
We have this example that we'd be happy to share with. So it is, it is, it's almost humorous to have this conversation when the answers and the background are there.
Very good. Because I was going to say, let's have a look at your experience. You've been through this.
Yeah. So I think it's, I mean, 20 years, and we're talking about labor, whether it's outsourced labor or whether it's in-house labor. And so if you, if you make a contract like we did with El Cerrito, they're every bit as concerned about their costs as you would be or we are. And they have, and this is, they have a way of doing it, and I think it's fairly common, is that they base their increases on a means kind of scale, which incorporates, I don't know, 20, 30 different fire departments. So the increase, basically, is always getting to mean, which is, you know, they're halfway between the lowest and the highest. So it's pretty easy to do. I think what I'm going to ask Brenda to do, and she probably has it, is to simply give you our 20-year record. David and I are having a conversation about a couple of years, because it does kind of hop up and down. But I think it's pretty predictable. And you're going to make an arrangement with a very professional organization, and they want their side to work right, they want your side to work right. El Cerrito gets the economic benefit out of contracting for us because we're not, we're paying for one-third of a fire chief. You know, they have two stations, so that basically it's two-thirds their cost, one-third our cost. And actually, we have, we pay a little less than a full third because they have some other services. But it's pretty easy to see how this has worked for us. And I, I think we ought to have a little workshop on outsourcing.
I agree. I agree. I think, you know, you've been there for 20-plus years, so let's have a look.
The difference is, if we had tried to pay the mean to our police officers of what people, other agencies were getting, it would not have been financially possible for us to do. So that's all I'm saying, is that we have certain, excuse me.
Let's not have a debate here, okay?
I'm just saying, it's not as simple as saying, we'll just be able to accept whatever they agree to, because we'll be in a position to have to do, excuse me.
Let's, please not have a debate right now. This is informational. I do have a final question.
Let me just, if you want to see the.
Yes. What, Vanessa?
My question is, the analysis, not the charge, if I handle, now, if, uh, so, I'm here. We're just, finding, so, cons, like, we weren't charged, you know, you know.
All right. Okay, I, I have a question, okay? This is about questions and answers. So I would like to ask, the estimate of $230,000 continuing liability we'd have if we did contract out the police force, how long would that continue? Indefinitely. Well, no, wait a minute. Can't, I mean, eventually people are going to. Well, it's supposed, it's supposed to be directed at paying off, quote, unfunded liability. Our existing pension and healthcare obligations, right? No. Just CalPERS. Just your pension. Just the pension. Just the pension. Okay, so as long as those. And it's predicated, and it's predicated off of what CalPERS will tell you in their reports, which are subject to revision every year. I understand that. My question is, whatever that figure is, whether it's 230 or triple that, which I think is sort of what you were implying it could well be, how long would that go on before our liability is finally paid off because we don't have employees anymore? Impossible to tell. Well, it's as long as they live, right? Yes. But we're talking, and depends, so that's a pretty long time. So that's, you know, whatever cost analysis we do, whatever the cost of the contract is, we're going to have to factor in that 230,000-plus per year as part of the cost of contracting out. I just wanted to be clear on that. And let me point out one, the CalPERS report, by the way, for people who are interested, is an interesting document to read. In the particular one that I was looking at, which was the end of, I think, 2014, or the last one that was published, and there's supposedly a new one should be imminent in the November timeframe or something. In that particular report, they, and they don't do this every year, they rebalanced assumptions. Not the 7.5% assumption that they're going to earn, they kept that the same. But they rebalanced the assumptions on life expectancy and a few other factors. And the increase to our unfunded liability was about $800,000 in that, for that one adjustment. We paid that year about $200,000. So I was looking at it going, you mean to tell me this is going up four times faster than we're paying it off? Sort of told me, it's going to last a long time and it could be very big.
So I have one more question, and it's to all three of the people who spoke. I thought Katya asked a really good question about next steps. Same for contracting out, same for consolidation? What's the timeframe we're looking at? Is it months, is it years, decades? If you can, I may not be...
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I can. I can tell you that having clarity on what this, should you opt to bifurcate, having clarity on what that person would actually do as either a full-time or a part-time, and really flushing that out would be very critical. Probably bifurcation would be at least time-consuming, but between the, really cranking out what that person would do, as well as being very clear as what the district is trying to achieve through a strategic process, would be the first steps, and finding the money, and finding the money, let's not forget the most important thing. You know, that, I don't know, I don't know, would that be three to six months?
That was a tough question.
From a contracting, I guess I would, I would simply point to the study that Arinda Lafayette, Arinda Danville did as a, as a possible benchmark, and it was about an eighth-month study and about $90,000 or something, so, done by a firm that does that kind of thing for a living.
That's helpful, thank you. Anybody else?
For consolidation, I think it's really a question of, when do we feel like the community has talked about this enough to be surveyed? And I don't really have a good answer to that, to that question. I think the, the issue of understanding how the two districts are financed and run, what the, you know, I don't consider consolidation a Band-Aid for financial issues in the KPPCSD, so what, the issue of the community understanding the particular challenges in the KPPCSD that are financial and what that means, and understanding how the fire district financial situation works, we need to have a discussion about our community buildings and what that means going forward. I really encourage the Fire Board to make public the studies that are ongoing now, don't wait till after the election, but get that out there in the community now. Arguably the most important financial discussion. Well, just get, get material out, even in draft form. We published our draft findings in revisions that went on for months, so I really encourage you, that's a process, not an endpoint. Please inform the community. When the community's had a fair amount of discussion, I believe the community shares a lot of values that we can bring to bear on this discussion. Then we can talk about what makes sense, whether the community is even interested in consolidation, or some changes to our governance.
Can I ask a quick question here?
Make it quick.
This is really quick. Let me finish, Nina, you can wait. Now, here's the, okay, okay. There's two things, I was looking on your website, there's nothing about past structural reports at all, so I'd love to have those posted back on the website. I don't want to have to make continuous public, well, there's not, that I know of. Passed, that's what I said, passed. And the other thing is, I actually did submit a Public Records Act request to Don, and he passed it off to your general manager, but I would like to see a draft of what you're working on now. Is there some reason we can't see that?
It's complicated, we're looking at a number of different options, they all have, we don't have any, any good costing on it yet, when people, and I have said in a number of meetings that it's sort of a foolish thing to put out a cost that you have to later go back and eat, because everybody remembers that. And so we are, we're trying to get a draft done this month or something. We don't have the drawing, the simple diagram, plot up along, pretty much, whatnot, it's going to take like three or four weeks, I think. They have a three, four weeks...
We luckily have a conduit, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Don, we have a conduit for that information, it's coming through, I'm the chair of the Public Safety Committee, Public Safety Building Committee, and that will come directly through me, and I will, as soon as I have it, share it with every one of my board members.
That's fine, but let me finish, Don.
I apologize, I had an emergency trip out of town, and I couldn't sit in.
Guys, I'm still trying to wrap my arms around just where you are in your process. You prepared to have a town hall meeting on this before the election, and that got pushed off, and I just want to know, have you seen the draft report now? Do you have one? Okay, that's fine, that's why I'm asking, Don, I need to know that, I asked for that, okay? Thank you.
Okay, we have to wrap it up now. We do have a wedding starting right away. If you folks, some of you could stay and help us clean up, that'll be very appreciated.
Can I just say, thank you to all my colleagues in putting this together.
Thanks again to you folks, did a yeoman's job, thank you very much.
Read it, enjoy.
I guess we need a motion to adjourn. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.